There we go. All right, so good afternoon once again. Welcome to our Education Youth and Old Adults Committee. Chairman John Bullock of the 9th District. Again, joined by Vice Chair of the Committee, Mark Parker of the 1st District. We are also joined by Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District. Also joined by Councilmember Odette Ramos of the 14th District, and Councilmember Jermaine Jones of the 12th District. And we are also pleased to be joined by Councilmember Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, who is also the sponsor of the hearing that we're going to be having today, which is focused on... Hopefully this works better. All right, there we go. And so again, this is our informational hearing regarding middle school sports. I can just tell you, just from a personal point of view, how much sports has been an impact on my life. I know that I would not be where I am without the teachers, coaches, mentors that I had in terms of sports. It's been a lifelong passion for me. And I think about what it meant for me as a young person and how much it means for our young people. I do know it means a lot to Councilmember Blanchard, who has also spent his time and his talent coaching some of our young people here in Baltimore City. And so, without further ado, I will allow Councilmember Blanchard to have a few comments, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I am so excited today. I'm excited for this hearing and obviously more so for the growth that we've seen in city schools' middle school sports over the last several years. I've coached high school football at Disher Harbor for the last four years. And in that, I've seen firsthand how sports gives kids something to be excited about, something to do after school, an opportunity to make their friends and their families and their teachers and their communities proud of them. This all helps with school attendance, which as we know is a big priority in city schools, and also helps with grades, both because, A, the kids are at school, they're excited, and also because it gives, you know, coaches a bit of leverage, you know, an opportunity to say, like, hey, what's going on in math? What's going on in your English class? All that type of stuff. That's really beneficial. And I think most people are really aware of that, how sports helps with grades and attendance and hard work and teamwork. But something else that I think is also nearly as important, sports also plays a big role in building social connections, pride in your school, and a sense of place, both with the school and with the community. It gives parents and neighbors and businesses a good way to get involved in school. All of that's incredibly important. One really good example of this, we, Disher Harbor, was playing Forest Park High School for their homecoming game a month, month and a half ago. And you see, I mean, the amount of community involvement. The barbecues are fired up. They have, you know, they've got the band, they've got a full band, they've got the dance team. They had, I mean, one of the bigger turnouts that I've seen at a city school sporting event. And it, you know, that kind of ties in when I see that Forest Park High School just, you know, made the jump to three stars on this recent report card. And that, that all kind of fits in. And so I think that all this is great. Really, really excited to see how we as a city council are aware of ways that we can support and push for the continued growth and improvement in middle school sports. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Really appreciate you. Also appreciate our committee staff. Always great to have you, Julia Jermont. I also want to make mention of representatives from the mayor's office, council president's office, as well as our city agencies. I know we have Baltimore City Schools, we have our Children and Youth Fund, we also have Wreckin Parks. And so again, there's a lot that we could talk about today and just get into the details. But I do want to provide an opportunity, at least from the administration, I know you may have some comments, so please, go for it.
Sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Noel West. I am the Assistant Deputy Mayor for the Chief of Staff's office. I just want to go ahead and give everyone an opportunity to, like, just frame the conversation that we're going to have today and talk a bit about this informational hearing. So, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Baltimore City Council. On behalf of Mayor Brandon M. Scott and the mayor's office, thank you for this opportunity to provide opening remarks for today's informational hearing on middle school sports in Baltimore City. Sports have always been more than recreation for the residents of Baltimore City. They are a powerful engine for public health, youth development, community safety, and neighborhood pride. From our rec centers to local club leagues, high school athletics to our iconic professional teams, go Ravens all day, sports play a vital role in shaping the physical, social, and emotional wellbeing of all Baltimoreans, of all ages. Mayor Scott and Dr. Santalisis recognize that access to safe, equitable, high-quality sports programming is essential to the success of our young people. That is why, several years ago, these two leaders recognized the gap in middle school sports and began to pave the way towards increased opportunities and coordination for our middle school sports students. What you will hear today is that as a result of that increased focus, coordination, and investment, middle school sports in Baltimore now has among the most robust middle school sports offerings of any other city in the country. While there is certainly more work to be done, some of which you will hear today, we are excited to do that work and we are committed to helping play a coordinating role among the partners you will hear from us today. We appreciate the council's continued commitment to elevating this issue, and we are looking forward to your support and participation. I will now go ahead and turn it over to the city schools team, then followed by the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. After that, we will also hear from Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. We look forward to this extremely important conversation, and we thank you again for your leadership and the opportunity for this convening.
I'd say again, thank you very much. Before we go to city schools, just read out again our purpose for today. Again, for the purpose of inviting representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott's administration, Baltimore City Public School System, and the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Baltimore Children Youth Fund to appear before the city council to provide an update on the current sports programs for middle school-aged children, identify which programs are being administered by city agencies, schools, and contractors, to present a recap of middle school sports program availability in the previous three years and a projection for opportunities in the next three years, identify opportunities for stakeholders to collaborate and increase the number of programs available in the future, and for better define these city agencies' role in middle school sports and identify further ways to engage middle school-aged children in programs and opportunities. All that being said is that we know the landscape. We want to understand more about the landscape and where we're going from here. We understand, again, that this is something that we are working toward. There are goals, there's a work in progress. But again, we want to see where we are because we want to have a North Star in terms of where we're going in this city and provides an opportunity for our young people. So with that, city schools, please have at it.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. I'm Allison Perkins Cohen. I'm the Chief of Staff for City Schools. And so grateful to be here just to introduce this really important topic. This, I too am a high school and middle school athlete. Both of my children, who went to city schools, played sports in middle school and/or high school and know very well how important it is to students, how days when students may not be feeling well, including in my own household, they might be much more likely to come to school if they have sports practice. And it really impacts, we see on student attendance, it impacts on their performance, their GPAs, and impacts their graduation rate. So we know it's really important. It's important to people's development. And from the time when Dr. Santalisis started, now almost 10 years ago, as she and I started, the original priorities that we developed in our blueprint, which predates the state's blueprint, was wholeness, literacy, and leadership. And this is an example of a priority that really touches on all three. Obviously, it touches wholeness, the idea that we want to make sure that students have a range of opportunities that meet all of their needs and get the... Is that better? All right, great. Anyway, wholeness, obviously, touch, that one's a little bit more on the nose in terms of is clear how that connects. But leadership too is, you know, this is a great way that students, we have opportunities for our students to be leaders on the field and off the field through sports. You know, we have great partners that we've developed through this that enhance those opportunities. So partners with Wreckin Parks and Children and Youth Fund, which we'll talk about today. But Under Armour is a great partner, the Ravens and the Orioles, and they've all created opportunities for leadership for our students via sports. And then literacy. Again, you know, there are GPA, there's a GPA that's required to participate in sports, and that's a major motivating factor. We also have support for students, again, supported by Under Armour, to help make sure that we have tutoring and support for our student athletes to make sure that they can play. And then the last piece is, like, this middle school journey has been really important to us because in Baltimore City, prior to this, we just didn't have the kinds of opportunities you see in other counties in terms of the opportunity for students to have access to play. We have, we have some opportunities for students, but often when, I knew it from my own students when they played sports, a lot of their students who played with them on, say, the baseball team, the first time they picked up a glove was when they got on the field at high school. And creating opportunities to really build development in a range of sports areas is really important. And so we're super proud of this work. I'm very, very proud of my team. I have here with me Tiffany Byrd, who's going to speak. She's our Director of Athletics. I've got Sonia Goodwin, who's the Executive Director of Wholeness. I've got Tanisha, why did I just blank your last name? Montgomery, sorry. Tanisha Montgomery, who's, I should not have forgot her last name because we talk all the time, who is our, who also has really led this middle school sports initiative. And then I've got Melissa Broom, our legislative team in Duwana. And this initiative is not a small undertaking. It takes a lot of work to pull this off. And so just huge kudos to the team who's been able to do it. And you'll just see the exponential growth in opportunities for our young people that have been so, so important to them. So Tiffany?
Okay. It's my pleasure to be able to speak today about the journey that we've taken. Thank you so much for having us this afternoon, Councilmember Bullock and committee chairs, I mean, members of the committee. The framework has kind of been laid for us today. We've heard the benefits of sport, you heard the vision. So I'll tell you just a little bit about our story. Am I controlling from here or will someone control the slides? Okay. So just a little bit about our story. The state of middle school athletics pre-COVID. We have had athletic opportunities for students in middle school, but they were modest in scope. We offered basketball and we offered track and field to student athletes. But we had to be modest in the program offerings because we did not have dedicated funding. So the funding that was dedicated to high school, we would kind of just try to siphon off a little bit to maintain the current programs that they had. So when schools reached out and said we are interested in joining, we didn't have room for growth or expansion at that time because the resources simply were not there. The resources in terms of finances and also, they take a number of other resources to make those programs work. And facilities was also a major challenge along with transportation and along with scheduling. So that's where we were coming out of COVID. Our journey forward, in partnership with Under Armour, we had a comprehensive landscape analysis. And it was important for us to talk to our stakeholders. We needed to know what they wanted to see in programming, what we were currently offering, and what the future could look like with this programming. So we did, a part of that was a comprehensive analysis of what was going on in surrounding areas. As you heard, Chief Perkins Cohen stated, we were aware that there were school districts that were offering some programming directly through their school district. But many didn't have to take this on because they had robust programming through their recreational programs. So the school districts did not offer or provide very much. When we looked at the way that we could move forward, we thought it was best to offer hybrid programming. We would take on some district-coordinated sports, but we also knew that there were greater, there was greater opportunity with partners. Through partnership, we thought that we could provide exposure to some sports that may not be as traditional or common to students. And so that's something that really excited us. Why this matters, what we saw in that analysis and heard directly from principals and schools clearly, they wanted district programming. They wanted the structure that that programming could provide and the consistency that that program provided at the high school level. Those principals wanted to see that for their middle school students. So we certainly were excited to venture down this path. Our strategic response on how we would move forward, we have to be honest, the commitment and the charge from Dr. Santalisis was very, very clear. We had to increase those opportunities for students. But in order to do that, there was a large financial commitment that was made to allow us to be able to move forward. So that's the journey, the way we started. In order to do it, we had to add more resources in our physical office. Our office was primarily overseeing high school with the two modest programs that I shared with you, but we had to build out our team. And so we were able to add to full-time staff members to be able to help support that work. As Chief Perkins Cohen stated, I'm simply here kind of going over the journey, but the majority of the lift has been done by the team. Ms. Montgomery, who she pointed out, has definitely helped build in the structure with the partnerships, making sure the contracts and transportation challenges were addressed. And the two team members, Ms. Vincent and Mr. Campbell, are the ones who have primarily led with the scheduling. They've also, if you come out to any of the events, they get the field set up for cross-country. They might be lining fields for flag football. They are the boots on the ground in the way that we offer these opportunities to students. So those two additional staff members helped us lift this work. We provided seven district-coordinated programs, but it was clear that they wanted competition because we put a lot of things forward in that proposal. We talked about intramurals and some possibilities, and it was clear that they wanted us to provide competitive opportunities. So that is exactly what we've done with those seven coordinated programs that we run. In order to leverage the partnerships, we thought it was best to go through developing the RFP. Let someone come in, assist us in mobilizing groups of people to put forward the partnerships. But we weren't successful, if we're being quite honest. We did a debrief to figure out, well, why did this not go well? We heard from communities, some just had, or different partners, they said, "Our niche is this and we want to stay in this lane. We don't want to oversee a large group of people." That was fair. Some felt it was too much of a large undertaking. So we had to pivot. We became that group that we wanted the RFP to do. And so that's why Ms. Montgomery has been so essential, because she has facilitated that work. So we coordinated that vendor programming directly from district office. So she has set up the work again with the contracts. She has regular meetings with the partners to determine how it's going. She helps determine what the need or what we can provide them financially as an investment to help stand up their programming. We've partnered with 16 vendors. And in doing so, we've been able to provide opportunities that you will see on the next slide, as well as leadership. Middle school is a different environment. In high school athletics, you have an athletic director. You have opportunities for professional development. We needed to support middle schools in that way because while there are a lot of people that may be interested in supporting, some just don't come with the knowledge of the sport. So we tried to build that up through our professional development to grow those that are supporting our students. Here you will see our seven district-coordinated sports are in blue. And then you will see that in the green, we have those that we've partnered with others to provide to our students. I think it's important to call out where you see unified offerings at the middle school level. We understood that we have an obligation and we're very proud to support our students with special needs in our athletic programming. So that is where you see our work in unified. Here you'll see the partners that we have engaged with, 14 of the 16, the other two provide that coaching development that I spoke about. And we've been strategic with using the resources of the partners. And so you will see that there are some partners such as First Tee, also Squashwise, that have been able to move into the instructional space through physical education and provide some opportunities within that school setting. Others have provided clinics. Coppin State has been a humongous partner for us with our track and field programming. They not only have provided us a facility, they allow their student athletes to come out and provide training to our students and help us actually run the meets. So that has been awesome as well. When it comes down to the numbers, I think you see that we've had significant growth since we've started this program. In our first year of '22, '23, we were servicing roughly 1,400 students. And now that number has soared to almost 4,300 students with our programming along with the vendor-coordinated programming. So the vendor programming is also a significant jump because they are almost servicing as many students as we are. And so that's what we're very, very happy to see in talking about how we've grown in that work. We have, this year alone, in quarter one, quarter two, and just to, I guess, set the landscape a little bit more clearly, for our middle school, we offer programming by quarter, similar to how they are in school academically. At the high school level, it's fall, winter, spring. But we offer different programs every quarter. And so in quarter one and quarter two of this school year, our numbers are higher than they have been in years past. So we believe that we're on a great trajectory moving forward for growing our program at the district-coordinated level. And we anticipate to see the same thing from the work with our vendors. With this shared path forward, we're talking about substantial expansion of the opportunities already. But in that growth, we have experienced also building that strong pipeline. That was another part of the vision. If we could expose students to athletics earlier, then we would hope to be able to retain them participating in high school. Particularly for female student athletes, you see across the nation a drop off in participation. And so that is one of the reasons that we definitely wanted to target that exposure. This fall, I was very, very impressed with our middle school cross-country. We had over 200 young ladies participating in cross-country at the middle school level. We do not see those numbers just yet on the high school level, but we're hopeful that we will. And our flag football offering, that has been a huge success for us at the high school level. But with the exposure, we have seen students participating at the middle school level now participating on our high school teams. So that's the growth and development that we're hopeful for. Track has always been a very large program for us at the middle school level. And so it's exciting to see those athletes remembering our staff, like, you know, waving like they were a part of those programs and getting them started and teaching them those fundamental skills. This long-term investment, we believe, has paid dividends. But I have to be honest and admit here, as we grow, there are significant challenges with that growth. We have offered kicking off volleyball for this quarter two. And we are busting at the seams in some of the places. We have so many student athletes participating in volleyball that it's almost difficult at some point to have spectators. Many of our middle school buildings are not suited for offering these type of activities, particularly with multiple games being played at one time. So there are challenges with facilities. We know that it will take a continued investment to grow these programs. We know that we will have to adjust, address some of the challenges that we see from the growth of the programs. Increase possible money for transportation. We understand, again, that facilities will sometimes be an issue. Not so much with cross-country. The parks are big, we can do it, but those indoor facilities and sometimes field layouts for flag football do present a challenge. And we know continued partnership will definitely mean that we can help more students. We can provide these wonderful opportunities with the benefits that have already been stated to athletics. The connectivity to a caring adult, we think, is a huge thing when you're working with a coach, another person that you can rely on, connect with, another person that is, again, checking on your academic progress. You are more connected to the school environment. So all of those things have been stated. And we do hope that the partners that we engage with help us build out that work. And so one of the partnerships that we will be piloting this spring is the $300,000 investment that has been made by BCYF. So they are the partner that we will engage with this spring and hope to hear back about how that goes from the pilot. And I believe the next presenter will go before we entertain questions. Is that correct? Okay.
Real quick, just thank you for the presentation. I know a quick question from Vice President Middleton, and then I want to go to Vice Chair Parker really quickly, and then we'll switch to some testimony and some other presentations. So we'll do a bunch of stuff, but please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I have to leave after my question multitasking today. I first want to thank Councilman Blanchard for bringing this issue back up to give updates because I know last term, this was really a nice kickoff from the previous council administration and, and of course, the mayor. This is just really good information, so thank you for the update. So I guess the only question I have, because there'll be after-school programs in the middle school now and the fields will be used and so on and so forth, what role will the school police play in all of this for the safety of the children? I'm sure there have to be some added information for them, you know, work for them to do because they have been focused for a long time on high school safety on the grounds.
With the programming that we currently offer, they have been a major support. But we do have to rely heavily also on school communities and their leadership to help us oversee and offer administration for those games. So we do have police officers assigned when we have large gatherings of students. But it's my understanding that they are also in the process of trying to increase and expand their workforce. But yes, clearly, high school is a large part of the work they do for the after-school activities that we provide. So I do think that they will continue to support us. But we are also, even at the high school level, looking at some alternatives for security as we grow our programming.
And parental, I guess, volunteers is very important. And just to say that we can, anything we can do to help with that in getting that message out about needing volunteers in the various surrounding communities, I'm sure the council would love to help with that.
Thank you so much for that note. And I'm happy that you called them out because we would like to shout out our middle school parents because they can be seen, particularly this year with flag, all around the fields. They'll help you pick up at the, at the end of the evening. But they are definitely, they are cheering and supporting their students, and we love to see it.
No, thank you, thank you for the question. One of the things I think is really important is to talk about middle school sports is really, who are the consumers? Who are, who are our folks who are taking advantage of these opportunities and hearing directly from them, but also parents or other providers? I know that there are some people online who may want to testify, and we'll get to them later. But there may be people who are also in the chambers. I know a few people have signed up. So again, if you, if you would like to testify before we go over to the Youth Fund and Wreckin Parks, please let us know. I do see a Katie Scott, I see a Kaden Coles, Marley Amybolt, and Angelo Solero. If any of you are here and would like to have a few words before we move on, please feel free to come forward. All right. Here we go. So as you come to the microphone, feel free to adjust it. Please give us your name, and we look forward to hearing from you, please.
My name is Kaden Coles. I'm a seventh-grade student at Thomas Johnson Elementary Middle. I appreciate the time to tell my thoughts on middle school sports. I played two seasons of soccer and three seasons of basketball. I also play in-house basketball, flag football, and volleyball at my school. Special shout-out to my assistant principal, Ms. Scotty, and my gym teacher, Mr. Hughes, for organizing these in-house leagues. They really work hard to do that. Playing middle school sports really allows me to represent my school to our community and be a leader inside of my school. Our basketball coaches have always, always have us wear shirts and ties on away games to, like, prepare us for high school. I play in other travel programs of baseball and basketball. And while they're fun and have their own great qualities, the ability to play with people I more know, like my classmates, is just a better connection. I know that playing sports has helped some of my teammates with their grades and given them goals to reach for as they move on to high school. There are sometimes problems with the schedules and the buses. And I think that if more schools got together to do it, it could make it even, we can make even better leagues. I hope there will be even more chances to apply middle school sports moving forward.
Great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Very well done. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Angelo Solera. I'm the founder and the executive director of Nuestros Reyes Inc. in East Baltimore. We are in support of this program. We are looking forward to put together a soccer clinic for Latino kids in East Baltimore. As you were mentioning earlier, sports is so important because it really gets kids involved in building who they are as kids. In the Latino community, many of our kids are home after they got out of school doing nothing because their parents are working. So I think this program will really help them to really engage in a sport that is on their blood. Soccer is what these kids know. And we are looking to partner with the middle school, Highland Town Elementary and Middle School. They have a beautiful, new, just-built soccer field that we are looking forward to. So we are very much in support of this program, and we look forward to working this project. And thank you for taking this initiative. I think it's very, very important to have middle kids because unfortunately... Looking forward to it, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. You said some important things. I mean, you mentioned partnership. We talked about our facilities, but then also representation in the different types of folks that we're trying to reach out to. So it's very, very much appreciated.
My name is Marley Amybolt, and I'm an eighth grader at Thomas Johnson Elementary Middle. And I recently joined the Thomas Johnson Coed Volleyball League for Middle School. And the league was amazing for me. It helped me connect with people my age. And it didn't, like, limit us to just, like, boys' sports or girls' sports. And... And my mom was my coach, and it helped me connect with her even more than like I thought I would. I was, it was really awkward at first, but like, once we, once we started playing games and stuff, the encouragement I got from her was amazing. And it helped me bond with my mom on a whole new level. And the people on my team I wouldn't imagine being friends with, but we were able to connect over volleyball. And we, we built this friendship that I wouldn't even like imagine having with them. And the league in general helped me bond with all the kids that were like in it, and we were able to play for fun. You didn't have to know how to play, they'd let you in just because you had an interest. I joined because I wanted to play volleyball, and I got really good. And it did like a lot of well for me because it was a way for me to like also vent emotion and have fun and build friendship and connections. And overall, I would definitely do it again if I could.
Again, just excited about the, the testimony, but also you lifted up some very important things. You talked about bonding, we think about friendship, even relationships with family, but also getting better at something, right? That level of achievement is something that you can take with you forever, thank you, please.
Hello, everyone, I'm very proud of my two students that just spoke. My name is Katie Scotty, I'm the assistant principal at Thomas Johnson Elementary Middle School in South Baltimore. Um, I would like to just share what, and echo what everyone said, has said, including my students, how important it is to expand these athletic opportunities for middle school students. I see every day, uh, the power of being on a team, how it can build not only their athletic skill, but their competence and who they can become. And sports teach, uh, teach the lessons of discipline, resilience, leadership, and empathy. And I see that every day with the sports teams that we have at Thomas Johnson. At Thomas Johnson specifically, we worked hard to create lots of opportunities, and I'm proud to share that we've expanded to seven sports teams this year, our largest number ever at our school. And for a small community school, this is a incredible accomplishment, and I have to shout out my, um, P E teacher and our volunteer coaches who do a lot of the legwork on this. Our students in our community, our coaches, and our parents are all very proud of what we have built. But I would be very remiss if I did not acknowledge the challenges that we face in sustaining and growing these programs. First and foremost, resources remain a significant hurdle for us. Funding is tight, and our ability to provide the equipment, uniforms, transportation, and coaching, um, stipends is limited. We rely heavily on staff and community partner, partnerships, but that can only stretch so far. Second, there's an issue of time in middle schools. Not all middle schools have a dedicated athletic director. So much of the coordination from finding leagues or forming, forming partnerships, when they are limited. Um, and scheduling games and managing the logistics often falls on either me or my P E teacher, who we also call the athletic director. Um, we do it because we love it and we believe in it, but the investment is immense, and it often means me having to choose between urgent administrative tasks at school and, or building new opportunities for kids, and I am trying to do all the things at all the times, but, um, it i- it is a, a challenge. Another thing that I've heard a lot of people speak on, I will speak out as well, there is a challenge of space. Um, our school specifically can only accommodate one team at a time, and we barely have room for visitors. We have standing room only, and they have to stand around the perimeter of the gym, and there's not even much room for seating. It's great to see the level of support that we have, but it's, um, difficult to get everyone in the community who wants to attend games to even be able to attend these games. Despite these challenges, our student enthusiasm keeps us moving forward. Um, Kaden and Marley just did a great job of talking about the intermural teams that we formed that are in-house, where our kids can play against each other and, and grow and support each other in a positive environment. The inclusivity of these programs shows what's possible when we make space figuratively, figuratively and literally for our students to belong. As we look ahead, we're eager to continue to just work with all of you and other local schools, um, and the district to be a part of the leagues, attend scrimmages, and identify sustainable partnerships that can expand our access. Our vision, and I know the vision of Baltimore City Schools, is that every middle school student who wants to have a chance to play can play regardless of their ability, background, and resources. I think you'll all agree that sports are not an extra, they are a central part of how we develop healthy, competent, and connected young people. Although I feel like we've made great strides at Thomas Johnson, we can't do it alone. And I really feel like the collective support and even having this conversation today with the district community partners and you all, um, is, is really important. And I'm confident that we can continue to build something truly meaningful. So thank you for your advocacy and your time for our students.
Uh, no, thank you. And Principal Scotty, I know that you are very proud of your young people as we are as well.
Thank you.
Um, but also your perspective as an administrator is also very valuable, um, to us, so thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I, I'm Abby Marco, I'm the executive director at Squashwise, also a proud parent at, um, Hammond Elementary of two kids, one soon to be in middle school next year. So I'm excited to see all of this growth and the charts of growth. Um, Squashwise is one of the 16 vendors that was proud to partner, is proud to partner with Baltimore City Schools. Um, we've had an amazing experience, huge shout-out to the team, um, Ms. Montgomery, Ms. Byrd. We have been in constant communication about our goals. Um, thanks to that, those two years of funding that we've had, Squashwise has been able to increase from about 100 participants a year in our youth development program to more than 700 students in Baltimore City Schools who've been able to participate in, in a variety of programs at Squashwise. Specifically, we were able to launch a school squash program where we come into P E classes across the district, and we bring the coaches, the equipment, and the fun. Um, most people have not heard of squash before. Um, actually, usually I start remarks by asking who has heard of squash. Um, if you have heard of it, you probably associate it with, uh, exclusive spaces like private schools, country clubs, and private universities, and we're trying to change that. So with the investment of funds from the city's middle school sports, um, initiative, we've been able to provide exposure, um, and provide enthusiasm for students, and also provide a pipeline into our more in-depth programs that we will grow when we, um, establish our own facility in January, actually, at the historic Greyhound Station on Howard Street. Um, I'm really excited and I'm, I'm hopeful and optimistic that we now have B C Y F in the mix with grant opportunities. Um, the more the city invests in youth sports, the more confident middle schoolers get, um, the better their grades get, uh, the more connected parents are to schools and to communities. Um, and just, you know, the more social capital there is out there that's shared in Baltimore. So I appreciate you all, um, bringing this to, you know, to the floor and having us give these remarks to show, you know, how invested we all are in this important topic. Thank you.
No, thank you, and we appreciate you. Um, we also see your investment not only as a partner, but as a parent, so those, those are two important hats to wear, so thank you so much for it. Is, is there anyone else here who would like to testify? Oh, yes, Howard Hughes, come on forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, my name is Howard Hughes, uh, I am a resident of Holland's Market for 25 years. I'm also a coach at the Carroll Park Panthers Youth Pro Program, uh, also working with the Neighborhood Sports Collective. In Carroll Park, we serve about 200 kids in seven different sports year-round. For the Neighborhood Sports Collective, it supports and connects neighborhoods-based sports organizations through data, reporting, coach development, league operations, serving about 2,000 kids in the Southwest District, Lakeland, uh, Garrett Park, uh, The Village, and such as that. Uh, last year, I was part of running one of the soccer leagues supported by the middle sports program. Uh, we had seven schools participate, about 150 students had practice or game twice per week for eight weeks. Uh, that's over 20 hours of challenge, connection, and physical activity times 150. Uh, what we want to do is start to understand what's going on with the s- the kids' sports. There are kids in every neighborhood in Baltimore City with talents, arts, science, writing, speaking. We need the spaces and opportunities for all these talents to be developed. Uh, the investment in youth sports is an investment in the talent of our youth, young people. There are many gaps in the Baltimore sports ecosystem. Access to different sports, recreational sports leagues, advanced training and competition, all of these are pieces that are necessary and meaningful to talent development pathway in sports. This invest, investment is very much needed and much more. Uh, in addition to funding, there is also a need for investment to be done to the design of this. And that, what I mean by that is there is too much investment in isolated clinics and one-off events. For, you know, again, not a politician, so I'm not looking for the, it being in front of people in front of the camera, I hate this right now. Um, taking a systematic approach will lead to greater efficiency and impact, and we need to acknowledge and invest in many leaders in Baltimore City who have done this work with little support for years, who are deeply committed and often coming out of their own pockets to make things work. Uh, we are not starting something new. Uh, we are just building off the foundations of their sweat and love. Uh, I hope you do make this investment in talent of our youth and continue to increase this investment, but also make an av-
First-hand the work that you're doing, so again, it, it is very much appreciated. Um, I see Mr. Marvin McDowell coming up, um, he needs no introduction, uh, Mr. No Hooks Before Books. Um, again, we just appreciate what you're doing in the community, but please, give us some words.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Baltimore City Youth Fund. Uh, with Baltimore City Youth Fund, I'm saying is a very needed organization that really helps. And with the help of the Baltimore City Youth Fund, for the last three years, we have developed each year five Golden Glove champs. So since from the support of the Baltimore City Youth Fund, we have developed 15 Golden Glove champions. And we looking forward to doing, doing, doing the same thing or more. Uh, I'm Umar Marvin McDowell, I'm the founder, president, and executive director of the Umar Boxing Youth Development. No Hooks Before Books, and Put the Guns Down, Put the Gloves Up. And we one of the first boxing organizations with a legitimate educational component, where the boxing and books are going on at the same time under one roof. You don't really associate boxing and thinking, but to be a good boxer, you have to be a good thinker. It's like playing chess, making the first moves, and you know, countering, you know, it takes a thinking person to do that. So what we're trying to do is erase that stereotype that they have on boxing, and they see us in a different sense. Uh, we have certified Baltimore City School teachers that work with the kids on math, reading, writing, homework. And we're teaching the Maryland and Baltimore boxing history. You know, a lot of, I guess a lot of you might not know that the first African-American World Boxing Champ was from Baltimore. His name was Joe Gans. The first African-American World Boxing Champ was from Baltimore. You know, and, uh, we're trying to teach the history of boxing here in Baltimore, and I'm part of that history, you know? Uh, I was the first African-American president of amateur boxing in Maryland. And the first African-American president of the Maryland Boxing Hall of Fame, which I'm a member of, is my Hall of Fame ring, you know? Yeah, but I'm saying anything and everything that we can do to help these kids to put them on the right path and have them doing the right thing, that's what we do. And I'm here in support of the Baltimore City Youth Fund, and I'm saying they've been a great, great help for us, and I really appreciate it. Thanks.
And again, thank you just for your years of dedication and consistency, please.
Salute. Uh, my name is Sam Brand, uh, thank you for allowing me this platform to speak today. Um, if you know me, you know I could be up here for three hours talking about the subject, so I'll spare everybody that time. I'm trying to be as efficient as I can, uh, but this is an issue that I've committed my, uh, professional and personal life to, uh, through, um, an investment that was made in me when I was a child. I grew up here, um, in Baltimore City, uh, through city schools, uh, Roland Park and Poly, to be exact, and then eventually, um, moving on to Morgan State University. Um, I got that opportunity at Morgan, uh, from an investment made in me through city schools and Wreckin' Parks. I actually wanted to wait until city schools and Wreckin' Parks taught because, um, I really do owe my professional career and journey up to this point and all my success to, uh, commitments that were made, uh, to my generation. Um, and, um, so Wreckin' Parks, Ella Bailey and Walter P. Carter, to be exact. Um, and then after my time at Morgan, I got to go back and work at Poly. Uh, Tiffany Byrd is our athletic director at the time, uh, you know, really appreciated that opportunity. Um, and, uh, eventually, uh, we, we experienced a lot of success through a holistic development program at Poly. Um, and I saw, at the time of the pandemic, we were on our fourth straight state championship. Um, and I saw a gap in investment in youth sports that was created by the, uh, privatization of the programming that I grew up in, in Wreckin' Parks and city schools. Uh, I decided to start a nonprofit called The Sanctuary Collective. Uh, we have our, uh, in the old New Somers Church on Franklin Cathedral is where we reside now. Shout-out to Zach Blanchard, our district city council, uh, representative, um, you know, makes me very happy to see that you called this. Thank you so much for your efforts there and your time as a coach in city schools. Uh, nothing more admired than, you know, showing your, uh, you know, service to our community in multiple ways. Um, thank you to the whole city council, the, the mayor's office in this pivotal time, um, in our city, in our country, um, and in young people's lives. And we talk about middle school sports, um, you know, that history of, uh, you know, I live in Mount Washington now, and I'm, I'm proud to say it because I did, I grew up with no electricity uh, on the second floor of my home in South Baltimore and East Baltimore, and truly was guided, um, to be able to make an impact in young people's lives. Being a math teacher at Poly through the programming that now we are reimagining. Um, so this time, so in my time as a, as a student, athlete, as a teacher, uh, as a coach, as a mentor, I mean, just a young person growing up in Baltimore. Um, you know, seeing what is needed now is so many people in this room that really like, uh, uh, have so much respect for so many people in this room and the time and energy that is put into youth development, and so many people understanding how that really does change the course of our city and our society. All these lessons that we talked about that we learned through, uh, team sports participation. How do we create, uh, the most efficient, um, because the, the privatization of our sports has come with competition from that privatization group? And we can beat them, the people in this room can beat them. We can offer better offerings than what has come of the toxic culture around youth development and sports through the true collaboration between entities like Wreckin' Parks, city schools, the B C Y F, and Mr. Umar, all, all, all these people in the city that grew up here and truly love the work behind creating these opportunities, loving the work behind creating the oppo- opportunities. And I'm really thankful to the B C Y F, I do believe that you guys are going to be a vehicle that does, uh, help us all come together for this common mission of providing these opportunities. And one thing that's been proven by so many, whether it be boxing champions, NBA stars, um, you know, a- all across sports, that when you make the investment and make it fair for young people in Baltimore, there is no competition. We win, we always have. So I really am very thankful, um, to all the different groups and entities involved here, and I humbly, humbly ask, that when it comes to basketball, please see The Sanctuary.
Very, very well said, and Mr. Brands wanted to say, you know, thank you for showing what's possible for our young people, right? But also painted forward and still staying in the fight, so we appreciate your work, please.
How you doing today? Uh, my name's Michael Brock, I'm here on behalf of Treehouse Academy, um, I partner with, uh, Chained Faces Mental Health. I'm the, also the coach for, uh, the Maryland Stars, seventh grade team. So, um, like, I offer, I offer training, I do offer training on wins for all, any, any kid that kind of, I'm try, if I come, I'm offer, uh, I'm also here for Wrexon Parks. Cause I'm, I be, I'm a coach out of San UFB Moors. So right now, they're trying to, uh, turn it into a homeless shelter. So, I mean, I, I, that's, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to help, uh, keep bring kids in there. I'm trying to help bring kids in there and, uh, just trying to just keep them out the street. I know how important it is for kids to have, just to have mentors and coaches and basketball, sports period in their life. And I also offer mental health services, so I know how important, cause my son, my son 13 and in eighth grade, so, um, and I did, I'm backstory on me, um, I did 11 years in prison, my whole, my son, that, that and my whole son, whole life in prison. So I come, I come home and he was like antisocial, he like, he was doing bad in school. Um, he was like, he was just like, I'd be like, come on, you wanna go out, I don't like people. He was like, that's the way he was, and he was getting bullied in school. So through help, uh, from people like Coach, Coach Marvin, I took him to boxing. When he, I took him to boxing, he did, but he doing well in boxing, he was doing well in boxing, he never got, he stopped getting bullied, and his confidence started to get up. So he got interested in boxing, like, I, like, all the people, Coach Sam, he's helped my son all- So he got interested in boxing. Like, like all the people, Coach Sam, he's helped my son all summer. Like the whole summer down at Sanctuary, he did that for my son the whole summer. So the things I've been trying to do, I'll be, I was outside at Beechfield, outside trying to help kids just free training. It's just free training, just trying to help kids. So kids come, kids, kids come. I just got somewhere where I could actually bring them at and have them in, and have a gym where their parents would want to bring them at. Where we can have a gym where I could actually, so I could actually train them. Because they wouldn't want to come outside with summertime. So now I got somewhere facility. I, we got a weight, people in there didn't even know we had a weight room in there. So I took some money, I took some of my own money, put some weights in there because I'm trying to get my kids, I'm trying to develop in the right way through, through fitness, mental health, so I know how important it was for me coming up. Because my coaches were my, my mentors. I didn't have my father. So my coaches were literally the most important people in my life who I call when I'm going through anything. And I try to be that to most, all of my kids. Now my son, he's like social, he the leader of my team. He loud as, mostly communicates and it's all through sports. Like it's nothing else would have helped them with, other than him playing a bunch of sport. He played football, he played, he boxed and he did, and he played basketball. And now I'm his coach. So I'm just trying to like, and I just need help. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying, I need help. I'm going, I'm, I'm doing the work. I'm out here, I'm going out and just trying to figure out a way to get these kids inside these wrecks. Because when I was coming up, that's all I had was the wrecks. And then when I, as I was growing up, the wrecks started shut, shutting down and it stopped being, stopped being programs for us. Like down Beechfield, they stopped having basketball for boys period. It was just for girls. So we had no choice but to like, if we couldn't get to no other wrecks other than where I'm from, then it was just hard. So I'm just trying to keep like the community, like it'd be kids when I walk inside, while I walk in there, it'd be kids out front of there. I'd be wondering like, why don't y'all come in here? You know what I'm saying? And I start inviting kids, the kids that be out front, tell them to come in here, make sure you got your basketball gear on and look like a basketball player when you come in here. And then whatever you do, I just, I know what we can do to save these kids. And I, and I get pushed back from my other coaches like, oh, what, what? I was one of them kids that they, if they come in here and on, and I make a post that say we got, we got open gym or training. And they come in here, they looking for something. So if they wanted to find what they was out, if they wanted to stay outside, they would stay outside. But if we got kids that's really looking for things, they don't even know it's in there. They don't even know they're, they invited to come in there. So my thing is I'm trying to like, get into the community and try and like, let them know that we in there and that we offering just to get off the streets.
Look, I, I appreciate so much of what you said. I say this as a father as well, you thinking about what it means in terms of myself and my sons and what you're modeling for your son, but also sharing your story. The other thing I will say is, as you mentioned, Sam, F B Morse is very close to, to my heart as well in our district. And you mentioned all the need, all the, all the challenges we have in the community. And people talk about public safety, talk about other challenges. But the way we get that is investing in our young people. So again, I appreciate what you're doing and also you're a living witness in terms of what's possible in terms of the partners that are in this room. So again, very much appreciated. And I think in terms of what you're trying to do, there are resources in the room that I think you can be able to tap into. So I think you're at the right place at the right time. Much appreciate you.
Appreciate everybody in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm in the Maryland, of course, this, I am a student of Murvo and I do want to say a little bit in the topic of what we're talking about. But I also want to bring up another topic that is important to not only the students at Murvo, but also to everybody that in the, in this whole chamber has experienced before, which is the struggles of construction. I am one of those people who been affected by construction, the process during October. My mom and I were moving, we were, we had two weeks. We were in two weeks of the moving process and everything was going well. We were close to our deadline, which was in, which was in four weeks. So we were halfway on, before the buyers could move in, after my club had ended. My mom and I, my mom picked me up. We took the same routes and the same roads to the same house. We were moving to a room out of. There were no signs on, on the road that were, that would be, that said would be closed. Until we got closer to our home, that was till we saw a road, a closed sign. The road led to our, our house. We just thought that was just the Fair Oaks Avenue and Evergreen Avenue work that were just closed. So we went around the roads until we got to Rose Lynn Avenue. And sadly, it was, it was another block that took us to the house. Even that route to our house was, ha, house was also closed. We're, we're assassins. Nothing was telling us when it would finish. So we asked one of the workers and, and she said to us, the road should open by five or six. It was already four o'clock, the point that we got to our house. She even suggested that we parked a block away from our house, but that wouldn't work with us considering we, we worried about carrying our stuff back to our car from a block away from our house. So sadly, we all decided to leave and do it tomorrow. But, but that not only affected us, but also affected my neighbors who couldn't leave their, their house at all. Because if they wanted to leave, they couldn't. Because all the roads, all the roads from every angle were closed off. So they couldn't leave at all. So if they had an important meeting to go, they wouldn't be able to leave at all. I'm not even the first person to encounter these problems with construction. People like my mom, who worked in the field of construction have faced problems. Well, she was working around from two thousands all the way to thousand, two thousand eight. She even told me that she, throughout the time she worked for construction, three or three times that she got her projects delayed due to lack of workforce in the construction. And the way that we can solve these problems that we're, we're facing in Baltimore is if we're, I'm just simply asking if you guys in the city council can help collaborate with Murvo and helping find a construction company that can help us send our Murvo construction and also business and other pathway students into the actual field of construction and permit office. As internships, our students spend four years learning trades such as electricity, engineering, business, and more, and could use internships for real world experience. Students will, for an intern with existing companies that to help approve permits or build projects and work on developing projects up to code. If the project is up to code, those students will pass and demonstrating their learning and they will get an opportunity to either work at a construction, construction company or work for another construction company. Not only will our students improve home and rebuild Baltimore, but the companies can also save money and get more support. My request is that you please consider partnering with Murvo, Murvo High School and, and find a way to improve, improve Baltimore construction delays. Doing so well that lives in the community in our city was, thank you.
No, th- thank you, thank you for your comments. And even though it was slightly away from what we were focusing on, it's very valuable for a couple of reasons. One, you mentioned Murvo. And we've talked in this, in this chamber and in this committee around college and career readiness and making sure that folks have that pathway. And some of the things you identify are important along that pathway. The other, other connective point I will make, as you mentioned Murvo, and I know the mayor of our city is a very proud Murvo graduate, who was also an athlete at Murvo. So I know I'm a runner, he was a runner cross-country, track and field. But I think the, the reality is that the goal for all of us to make sure that our young people are well situated for careers and anything else they want to do after the fact. So again, we thank you for using your voice and being here today and sharing your experiences. Very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenny Coolas. I'm in the South Baltimore neighborhood. I just, everything everyone said has been excellent. It's, it's cool to see the growth. I previously coached basketball in Baltimore County. And some people mentioned, these programs have been going on in the counties and the surrounding areas for a while. I can remember going back to, you know, watch a kid play sixth grade basketball. And that is a long, long time ago. So it's good to see the sort of the catching up and the, the same opportunities to our kids that are here in our neighborhoods. I've helped coach at Thomas Johnson as a volunteer. One thing I just want to say and keep it brief is, I want to make sure we tie in the other parts besides the athletics. Mrs. Byrd and their group are doing a good job with the athletics. But we've gone to games where lights are burned out in the gym. I can remember a specific game over at Westport where like, you couldn't even see in the gym. So I think it's important to provide not only the sports opportunity for these youngsters, but the facilities to go with that. That when the kids show up and the grass hasn't been cut, or it's not playable, they notice. And that gives an impression of like, it doesn't really matter to someone else. If you show up at a, a facility and the lights are burned out, or there's no basketballs available, just because that's the sport I, I know the best, the kids recognize those sort of things. I think it's really important just to make sure that it's a collaborative effort with all parts that go into the school system. I don't think that anyone, I never operate from a position that someone's not trying their best. I always assume they are. But I think it's important to factor in what does the environment we're presenting for the kids when they, not just the activity. Playing is great, the confidence is great, all the things that everyone has talked about, that's, that matters. But when, when they show up and the facilities aren't in a state that we would want to see our own kids play at, the kids kind of wonder, does anyone really care enough about this that, you know, that? And so I think this, that's just an important point to bring to all this as well. Obviously, facilities are challenged just by space and, you know, building age and all those sort of things. And I get that. But I think there are the little details that are key. When the bus is thirty-five minutes late, it's not to assume people aren't doing their best with it. Kids start to wonder how important that thing is. So I just would encourage everyone, as you make these investments, to continue on with it. And you're doing a great, great job. Just, I, I think the small details have to be remembered. Because I think those are the things that that matter, that matter to the kids. When they get a brand new uniform, that's a big deal. Is it a big deal really in life? Probably not. But is it a big deal to that kid? Do they feel that sort of way when they go on? So as you're going through the large work that this is, and it's, it's huge, and it provides a pathway to kids to get them from step A to, to step B. Our, our middle school basketball team last year, we talked about, you might not be a basketball player, but my goal is to help prepare you to try out for any high school sport. The discipline, the grades, the, the certain intangibles that matter. Because the sport comes and goes. And sometimes they all play their last game. That's a guarantee. But being able to provide the right environment for them to get the most out of it, I think is just something I hadn't heard anyone else mention. I'm sure a lot of people thought it, but just wanted to kind of get that out there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, one for, for coaching, but also pointing out those disparities. I could think about another opportunity in life where I had a similar experience of comparing facilities and what that means in terms of young people and also the pride in terms of a uniform and everything that comes along with that. So again, thank you for investing in these young people. Please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Meredith Newby. I'm the managing director for Coach Across America, formerly Up To Us Sports. I am a Baltimore City resident. I'm also a mom of a fifteen-month-old. So we're not quite at middle school yet, but it's in the future, I see it. And I began my career as a coach at an elementary school, Gwynn's Falls over West Side. And it was my first real sight of so many kids that were just not getting the opportunities, especially our female students, not getting the opportunities that I experienced in Baltimore County, not that far away. And with that, I transitioned from a psychology mindset from school straight into the sports world. And that's where I have developed my career. So I work with Coach Across America that works with quite a few of these organizations. And I think all of us have been hearing and saying over and over again today, the, the, the beautiful pieces of sport that come from beyond the physical piece, right? Not, not a single person here has really spoken about, you know, the health and ment, or physical well-being. It's really how it transitions and transforms the lives of youth when it comes to mental, uh, mental wellness and also their ability to create peer-to-peer connections, to have a caring adult in their life. And that's what we do with Coach Across America. So I encourage you all to continue what you're doing. It's amazing to see so many people invested in our young people when it comes to sport. Sport has been such an important part of my life. And I continue to play even at the age I am now. And I love sport for all the reasons that we've all talked about. But I want to continue to see our middle school, elementary school, as high school kids, being able to have that opportunity, not have to travel to go to that opportunity in a way that is difficult for them, right? It should be something that's at their door. And we want to continue to invest, but we also want to invest in the coaches. The coaches need to have the additional training to be able to bring this mental health wellness to the sport. There's a gamut of coaches. We see on the sidelines, you know, people, coaches that are just screaming at their kids. And then we see the coaches on the sidelines having real, true conversations. And what I want to see more of is the coaches that are able to build a community within their sport, because it's such an opportunity. Our coaches are with our kids more than almost any adult in their life. Two to three hours a day that they're spending with the kids, investing their time. And we want to make sure that those coaches are trained to be able to support kids on a whole life level. So I appreciate everything that everyone's doing. I love continuing to see sport grow in our community. And I want to also in, just exclamation point around the need for coaches to bring with them these additional tools and resources that we hope to provide and we hope to also have other organizations provide as well. So thank you.
I want to say thank you for your commitment, especially to young people, even in middle schoolers, even before your child is in middle school. So again, and you also used a very important word, and I find it as well, in terms of community, that sports community, and I still benefit from that. I will say in a lot of testimony, there were several individuals who lifted up the youth fund in terms of the work. So again, I think it's probably an appropriate time for us to shift over to the youth fund. So please.
I'm gonna pass this over to my colleagues. Which microphone do we think is the one that works? This, this one? Both? Keep both? Oh, I see. Okay, hold on then. Let me do some, some stage crafting over here. All right. Well, good afternoon to the chair and the vice chair and the members of the council in this committee. My name is Alicia Lee and I'm the president and CEO of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. We thank you already for your ongoing partnership and leadership. And as many of you know, because you were there, the Children and Youth Fund was created directly by Baltimore voters who envisioned a fund rooted in equity, accountability, and community wisdom. And so our charge at BCYF is very simple but profound. We build systems that allow Baltimore's young people to thrive. And so we brought a few members of our team with us here today. We have Vice President of External Affairs, Brandon Hanson. We also have co-director of grantmaking, Cherie Miller, who oversees the portfolio team. And most excitedly today, we have Program Officer Harold Young IV, who will be leading this initiative, the Charm City Youth Athletics on the BCYF side. BCYF serves as a bridge between philanthropy and community, and we pair public investment with community-rooted decision-making, ensuring that funding flows to organizations that are led by, and most importantly, deeply connected to the people that they serve. Next slide, please. At our core, our work advances a vision of a Baltimore that is just abundant and creative. Next slide. So since 2020, BCYF has distributed, has awarded more than forty million dollars directly to community-based youth-serving organizations. These investments create more than seventeen thousand youth seats every year and support over one hundred grantee partners annually. This is across the arts, sports, leadership development, mentoring, academic support, and more. I just want to say, you know, diving into CCYA and building this partnership, which we're going to talk about, I am an arts person. And I have been really embraced by the sports and athletics community who have helped me to stop saying costumes when I should say uniforms and rehearsals when I should say practice. So I'm really excited to join them and also to help to build a more a professional learning community amongst all of them too, that's rooted in equity and connection. Behind every dollar is a deeper impact. We, BCYF is looking to build stronger organizations to leave in its wake more sustainable programs and to lead with community-rooted leadership that will serve our city long, belong, beyond the life of any single individual grant cycle. Next slide. BCYF has a dual grantmaking approach. Our work is built on this dual investment model. We fund programs and we also invest in the people who make the programs possible. And so through direct grants, our organization makes sure that organizations receive the resources they need to run safe, engaging, rigorous programs. And through our Learning Lab program, which provides three hundred annual hours of world-class professional learning, they receive training, technical assistance, coaching, and peer learning that they need to be able to survive and also to thrive. This combined approach strengthens the entire youth development ecosystem in Baltimore. And it's the model that we'll be using and applying to the Charm City Youth Athletics Initiative. Next slide. BCYF already has a strong track record supporting youth sports across Baltimore. And over the past three years, we've partnered with dozens of organizations I'm seeing here on the screen, both large and small, that blend athletic skill-building with mentorship, community engagement, and leadership development. And this history positions BCYF well to help lead this coordinated citywide middle school athletics initiative alongside our partner, city schools. Next slide. The Charm City Youth Athletics is a bold citywide effort. The Charm City Youth Athletics is a bold citywide effort to expand access to safe, equitable, and joyful sports for middle school youth. BCYF manages the fund. We manage the grant making process and the capacity building supports, while city schools leads the outreach and ensures safety and compliance, and also connects CCYA to those district wide goals. Together, we are building a citywide athletic ecosystem that's grounded in health, equity, and joy, and aligned with national best practices like the Aspen Institute's Project Play Children's Bill of Rights in Sports. This initiatives bring together brings together funding, capacity, and youth leadership, all grounded in community. Next slide. A core component of CCYF, of course, is the direct grants for community rooted sports organizations. These grants prioritize equity organizations led by and serving Baltimore youth, operating in neighborhoods where opportunities have historically been limited. The goal is to expand access and to build pride so that every young person has a safe, supportive, and inspiring place to play. Next slide. Beyond funding, BCYF also strengthens organizations through our Learning Lab. So recently, we led an event, our Signature Gather Event. We had, of course, it was a sold out event. So capacity building is how we turn short term grants into long in term, um, long term impact. Through the Learning Lab, organizations can gain access to the more than three hundred hours of training, coaching, and peer learning that we'll be providing this year. This includes sport specific content on safety, equity, and youth development through play. And the spring learning cycle, or spring learning circle also will provide a deep cohort based learning specifically for sports and athletics programs. This October, we hosted our signature event, Gather, for the sports and athletic community for the first time. We had over fifty registrants. We had seventeen person waitlist, sold out like most of our events are. Sixty eight percent of the organizations that attended were black led organizations, and seventy four percent had already had experience with Baltimore City Public Schools, which is excellent. And the top activities represented were basketball, flag football, dance, baseball, softball, and yoga. This tells us two things, that the demand is real and the ecosystem is ready. And we're building on that momentum as we move into implementation. That enthusiasm will continue as we prepare for youth powered collaboration. Next slide. Upcoming, actually next Monday, we invite all, of course, any city council member that would like to attend, we'll make you a seat and we get you a ticket. But this is a sold out event. On Monday, we have our annual, third annual conference. And last Saturday, we had our pre conference where we had a track specifically for sports and athletics. This was a great opportunity for a intergenerational group of folks. We had youth and adults who co created the principles for inclusive and community rooted athletics. You'll see that graphic novel in January will be published with their community based definition on intergenerational leadership and also youth voice in sports. From stipends to community art to immersive site visits, we got to visit Mission Fit, one of our favorite locations in the city and a BCYF grantee. This track at the pre conference elevated youth voice and presented models of shared power, which is a key pillar of BCYF's work. Next slide. So some opportunities for collaboration. Collaboration is really essential to building a strong sports ecosystem, so no single agency or organization can do this alone. This is about building a coordinated network across schools, nonprofits, city agencies, recreation centers, and families to ensure safer play, stronger pathways, and more equitable access. And the most important collaborators are Baltimore's youth. Next slide. Who will now have a seat at the table through the Charm City Youth Athletics Council. The council ensures young people are not just participants in this system, but that they will be able to shape it. And this initiative will launch in late spring twenty twenty six. This is a youth led advisory council that will guide equity access and safety and advise BCYF, city schools, and the Charm City Sports Cabinet on all of the work that takes place. They'll be guided as well by our fundamental pieces from the Project Bill, Children's Bill of Rights in Sports. And they'll be able to help. This is an opportunity to build youth leadership through advocacy and shared decision making. So this is a powerful opportunity for young people to continue to build skills, develop their voice, and engage in real lifetime decision making here in our city. With those roles defined, let's look finally at how we work together to make CCYA thrive. Next slide. So BCYF manages the grants. We just opened a roster application. We'll be collaborating with city schools on on selecting the first round of vendors for the CCYA. We'll be calling them our athletic roster. But BCYF will provide the direct investments and also worked with organizations to strengthen organizational infrastructure through our Learning Lab programming. We'll also be the lead partner for evaluation and storytelling. City schools will ensure safety alignment with district policies and consistent outreach. They're also a prime partner in the vendor selection and, of course, ensuring compliance. And then the youth council will provide that accountability. They'll be strong advocates, make recommendations, and keep youth voice and equity at the center. And together, all three of these roles will create a stronger, more sustainable system for youth sports. We also invite the city council to support CCYA by attending site visits with us this spring. We are really excited to be able to have programs that will begin in terms of our funding around March first of twenty twenty six, and of course, amplifying the partnership. Next slide. So in closing, Charm City Youth Athletics is more than a program. It's an investment in infrastructure. It's an investment in joy, an investment in community connection, and an investment in youth leadership. I'm just loving seeing the leader breeders up there, one of our BCYF grantee partners. With BCYF, Baltimore City Schools, community partners, and Baltimore's young people at the table, we offer and will implement a shared vision where every middle schooler has access to play, grow, and lead. Thank you for your continued support, partnership, and commitment to building a stronger, more equitable Baltimore. Thank you.
One, I know we'll have some questions probably a little later, but again, I want to thank you just for the presentation. Also, we really appreciate the invitation to a site visit. I'll just say, I got a chance to do a site visit with BCYF over this, over the summer, and it was around music. And so take off my athletic garb and then it was doing some drumming and you were doing some work too. So there's some video somewhere about us, but anyway. Let's transition to Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, please.
Chair Bullock and Committee, I hope you will indulge me by allowing me to stay seated. Apparently, we play too much at Rec and Parks and I have tweaked my back, so I don't want to limp to the podium.
You are fine.
All right. Good afternoon. So here, Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, we are last in the program and it's intentional, right? We see our role in this process as simple but critical. We want to fill in the gaps of where there is a need for additional sports or facilities to be able to bring this, what we've talked about this afternoon, which is very important to us, to bring middle school sports to its full space in Baltimore. So in twenty twenty three, I think we were all charged. Okay, Jenny, all right, there we go. All charged with really leaning into the middle school space. At the same time, we started our program, our colleagues at BC, uh, city schools have started to lean into it as well. So since twenty twenty three, we've been able to launch our programs led by our Athletic Director, Mr. Matthews, who is here. Quinn Matthews is in the audience. But our goal is to bring young people together. Through, since twenty twenty three, we have had different seasonal offerings. So we've done co ed flag football, girls and boys basketball, of course, volleyball, kickball, and we do summer basketball all summer long. Since we started our program in twenty twenty three, we had different, over twenty schools, both city and charter schools have participated. And we usually average around six schools per sports season. I can just keep talking if I can't click. So where we see the strategic outlook for Rec and Parks is we want to make sure that every young person in middle school in Baltimore has access to the full offering of sports that are out there. So we did see from the slides from school systems that there is a huge variety of sports, but there is, there appears to be some gaps that we can fill in, right? So if schools has a really good basketball or football program, then perhaps our efforts are more appropriate in rugby or in golf. So what we want to and hope that we can get some clear direction on where we can best serve the system because we're not here to compete with our colleagues at the school system, but to complete the entire landscape so that every middle schooler has the full offering of sports that are available. So for us, we want to strengthen consistency and quality across our current offerings. So what we do, we want to make sure we're doing it well. And we want to expand the access. We want to make sure that all sports are available to the city, that all young people have the full complement. I think sometimes we do default to what we do well, which is basketball and flag football, but there's so much more than that. So we want to make sure that we are lifting up and making those experiences available for young people. And we like to coordinate with the school systems. We would love to see citywide championships and things that our schedules are coordinated so that every person in Baltimore understands what season we're in and when the championships will be and how they can, and the young people can participate. And then we also want a sustainable system, right? This started in twenty twenty three and we're all working really diligently in this space. But when we go off to be, you know, relaxed and retired, we want this system to be sustainable through our partnerships with the school system and with different funders like the Children's Youth Fund. So again, our slides are brief and they are at the end of the program because we do see ourselves as filling in the gap where there aren't offerings at a school for whatever reason that might be, where there is a novel or a new thing like pickleball that may not be widely available. We see ourselves as the bridge between what the school system is doing and what the city needs for the full complement. So our vision is that we would strengthen our partnership between ourselves and city schools and our community stakeholders that we will continue to expand the opportunities, enhance the quality, and establish a sustainable citywide middle school program. Short and sweet.
Awesome. We we like brevity. We also like being on point, and I appreciate you bridging the gap as an as an agency, but then also lifting up the fact that this is not competition, right? This is collaboration and making sure that our young people are being served. So again, very much appreciate the work that everyone's doing. With that, I'll turn it over to our Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Person Bullock. Thank you, everyone, for the really lively conversation today. And for this important time, thanks to my colleague, Mr. Blanchard, for bringing it before us and gathering us here for that conversation. I want to start by saying I really appreciate the role that and the leadership of BCYF is playing in this, not only in the CCYA process and partnership city schools, but that that over the years, BCYF has identified youth sports in particular as an area which has been impacted by the inequities that exist in current youth faced, youth funding streams, right? I think we all know how important it is, but I think so outside funders and kind of the powers that be, it's treated as an afterthought or not as central to the development and and the growth of young people. And BCYF has always been there because BCYF listens so carefully to the community and to the voice of young people, and therefore lets that drive the agenda. What's important to them, what's important for their growth, is then where BCYF spends its time, energy, and resources. So grateful to see this continuing into a more formal way in partnership with Baltimore City Schools and really excited to see what what comes from it, especially adopting that ecosystem approach, right, which is central, right? Not just one program here, one program there, but then helping say, okay, what does this look like overall? So really grateful for your role in that. Had a few questions to ask. I noticed that on the BCYF slide, the goal was sixty three percent middle school student sports participation by twenty thirty. I, right now, I think I saw on the school system slide, I started from the first school system, I, on the school system slide, saw about four thousand were like the number of participants, and granted, that's going up as we speak, out of sixteen thousand or so middle school students right now. When we talk about sixty, I really appreciate the specificity of sixty three percent. Can you either BCYF or Baltimore City Schools speak to what does that look like in particular? So like, for example, some of our students who spoke are involved in multiple sports. So are we, we're talking about individual students? Are we talking about kind of seats per sport overall that we're offering? And then also what that looks like? We already know that that part of the ecosystem that currently exists is that a number of schools, individual schools are very invested in or have the partnerships to really to really bring this to life kind of on their own. And other schools, it's been it's been a heavier lift and hard. And so is there, are there particular goals from an equity standpoint around how those sixty three percent are spread around our middle schools that currently exist? So I'll start with that.
It seems like that's a shared answer, so I'll start from our vantage point at city schools as it relates to driving those percentages. We do and have acknowledged that in order to grow, we will have to address some facility concerns. Our numbers are not unique numbers at that time, so they are captured as registrants for everything that they participate in. Additionally, as we talk about looking forward to what that growth is like, that is one of our actual goals this year. We are very, very excited about the students that are participating, but we also are taking a more critical look at the schools that have not yet participated. We are reaching out and doing outreach to those schools to try to determine what the barrier is to participation because it's great that some schools are building out more robust programming, but we don't want to leave anyone behind. That was the entire push behind this to make sure that it was accessible and equitable. So we are looking very closely at what schools are participating, reaching out to the schools that have not participated, and how many new schools we engage this year is actually our goal for the school year.
Is that, is that on? Yeah. City Schools definitely has helped us to understand some of the equity considerations that we'll be making around the proposals that come through. And then the other piece, I think it's a great opportunity just to just explicitly state that this is a fund that other funders can also support. So we are making this initial investment. We are committed to continuing to invest. And our hope is that through the storytelling and evaluation and the success that we know is imminent, that other funders can support to get us to that sixty three percent. Also, I'll just throw out that, I mean, internally, for me personally, the goal of sixty three percent by twenty thirty sounds great, but I think our real goal would be a hundred percent of students having access to play and movement and athleticism, right? So all young people in middle school should have access to those opportunities. It doesn't necessarily mean league play. And so that's why this opportunity or this initiative interests me is this is beyond just building sports teams for kids, which is also very important. This is about providing access to even family activity, pushing into after school programs, pushing in, making sure that young people in middle school see daily opportunities and avenues for movement and experience with athleticism. So that that goal of sixty three percent by twenty thirty is important, but I think the bigger goal will will soon be on the horizon.
Good. Thank you both for those answers. I really appreciate that commitment. Along those lines, I I know our our presentation highlighted Unified Sports. I had the chance to be not in my district, but I was, I happen to know the the school well at Armistead Gardens, where they are receiving recognition on a statewide level for Special Olympics for fantastic work there. So really incredibly excited to see that as as central to this work. I know some of our folks who are testifying mentioned, especially equity in terms of gender access and things like that. And so are there are there particular goals around both inclusionary sports for for our students with special needs and for gender? What does what does that look like? Are there, do we have, are there things we're aiming at there?
On the city school side, what we do aim for is to make sure that everybody has access every sport offering. So each season that we are offering traditional opportunities, we're making sure that there is also a unified offering for participation. We actually have looked, because bocce is extremely popular with our unified program, and so much so that we do it indoor and outdoor, and we attempted to make a shift to see if they wanted something different, but it's a strong no. They love their bocce. So we will continue to look at the other activities that they're offering, but our goal ultimately is every time there is a season or a quarter where traditional offerings are being provided, we have a responsibility to make sure that there is a unified offering as well.
And how does that play into then to the gender aspects of participation?
In terms of gender aspects, we actually, at a city schools level, we do look at that. And so each season that we have offerings, we make sure that there is an opportunity for the partners. But we have been told to prioritize the female sport participation. So you'll see in quarter two, we offer for middle school student athletes volleyball, one of our actually highest participation sports at the high school level. And then basketball, of course, there is opportunities each season for all students to participate. But quarter two, we have a unified offering in volleyball just to make sure that we are putting a priority on identifying more female athletes. And there were more participants, as I stated, in cross country for females than there were for young males in our quarter one season.
Thank you very much. A number of folks addressed the the role of adults, whether it's parents, volunteers, coaches, teaching staff who are doubling as coaches, coaches who are doubling as athletic directors, administrators doing the rest. Wanted to ask two particular questions there. I know there's been a lot of conversation in recent years at the high school level around the availability of athletic trainers and medical support for our athletes. I'm curious to see as we grow and expand and become more I'm curious to see a- as we grow and expand and become more diffuse, right? Because by our nature, we have way more middle schools than we have high schools. Um what does that, what does that look like? What are we doing to to ensure safety and safe participation for our young people? Um and then I I think President Lee spoke about this a bit. Um but between B C O F and uh city schools in the C C Y A um initiative, um what is the capacity building and the tech support look like, not only for the organizations, but particularly for coaches, to help coaches become better coaches and receive the training information they need? And so um interested to see where that's coming from in the system.
Okay, so I think I'll take part one and then pass the baton. Um thank you for the call out around health and safety. That is critical for us. We are very proud that we have uh moved to a position that all of our traditional schools that are under the oversight of the Office of Athletics for High School have athletic trainers. And that has been um a really huge asset for our district, but most importantly for our students and the care that they receive. Um at the middle school level, because as you stated, there are so many contests, we are more reliant on medics um at our events to support those events. And as we grow in capacity, we do have to look at what that will continue to look like, but we use medics to provide um support for middle school.
And then on on our side, um the application for to join the roster um was highly successful. We had thirty-eight applicants, which is really exciting. We're still in the process of reviewing those applications, so I have more information about what sports will be provided um in our catalog to city schools. Um but also, it was a really strong showing, um because I think people were excited about the possibility of having a more coordinated effort around professional learning. Um and so we're really rooting all of the professional learning that we provide around the Aspen Institute's Children Bill of Rights in Sports, which is um rooted on um some of those other bills of rights in sports that have emerged from other um uh more challenging issues that have happened in professional athleticism, right? Um but the the pre-conference that we had on Saturday, we were looking at specifically number five, which is where we're going to be focusing a lot of our time this year, which is that young people deserve the right to have a voice and choice in the activities that they participate in. Um as a classical musician, I understand how challenging that can be for a coach or a maestro to share space and power. But the coaches and the folks who showed up really were excited about learning some new strategies. And we have a lot of B C Y F partners who do that work constantly. So being able to have um the kinds of professional learning opportunities that we design are um fully engaged ones where folks are able to participate and experience and then reflect and then plan forward. So folks were able to, on Saturday, we had six hours together. We were to take a field trip to Mission Fit to experience and see what it looks like to have an intergenerational space, to come back and reflect on that using some of our frameworks, and then we'll share that back out. Um we also have um a February or winter time learning circle, so that's more of a cohort style learning. That'd be specifically for sports and athletics. But these folks can also participate in the other three hundred hours of professional learning we have this year around the Baltimore Youth Master Plan, which will be another great opportunity to experience intergenerational leadership together. Um anywhere, anything from our monthly drop-in sessions to our um longer term um our opening plenaries or our longer-term cohort style learning. So there's a lot of a range and diversification of professional learning, which I think is what makes the B C Y F grantee community so closely knit and tight because we're learning together and we're building together. Um and this will be a great opportunity for the sports and athletics community to come under that umbrella.
So thank you for lifting up the importance of professional development and education, right? Because again, that's really important um in terms of providing the best services for our young people. I'm just gonna go straight down the line. I'll go to Councilmember Blanchard and then um Councilmembers Jones and Ramos, please.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I have like seven thousand questions. I'll try to limit it to like two. Um no, this this has been super helpful a- and great. First one, um going back to the the percentage goal of sixty-three percent by by twenty thirty, something that we heard today and that um I've heard multiple times from um schools and youth leagues and whatnot is is at facilities access and 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 just uh the increasing demand that we hope, we hope to see, right? Um but but we're at like, we're we're probably talking roughly like tripling. The 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 goal is to like triple um student middle school participation, which I think is an incredible goal. Um but just to think about some of the challenges we already have with facilities access, that that is also pretty daunting. So I just um I think this is like a a real like a an ambitious, an ambitious goal that requires a an ambitious strategy for for so facilities access. Um and so I would love to hear either from city schools or from Wrenken Parks or from both of like, what's what's the strategy to to try to provide the facilities needed to reach these goals?
I think um as it's a shared question, it will be a collaboration that we have already discussed that we have to, I guess, invest upon um to make sure that we're clear. As you stated, it's a good problem to have, right? More young people are participating, more young people are interested, but we're gonna need greater investment. Um we're going to need more strategic planning to be able to maximize the spaces that we do have. Um and it's very likely that we will also need funding to be able to better outfit some of the spaces that we have to be more suitable for what we're doing. I don't think we have an answer right now, but I think it's something that we definitely know if we're gonna reach the goal that we have to work together to address.
I I'd love to also just share part of our strategy is not to jump into large-scale residency work with this with this funding. So you're gonna find um that there's gonna be an offering in the catalog for one-day opportunities for folks to um bring young people out to Lake Clifton, to to take people outside of their schools. Also, things for full for family evening events, right, around movement. Because we know that not every school is ready and equipped to really kind of sustain like long-term league play. And so part of what we're committed to is offering a range of offerings that can help schools over time as we build these capacities around facilities, but also build the capacities around partnership. Um these are programs that will be offered for free to a school, but free does not create partnership, right? Partnership are are a series of uh consistent behaviors that occur over time. So we're even thinking about that kind of infrastructure. Um and so that range of offerings that you'll see in the final catalog will speak to that as well. This is not just an opportunity for, you're not gonna see just all full-scale league play.
Yeah, I understood. Uh just to jump in before we go to ju- just specifically to um to B C O F's point, um something that uh the gentleman from Carroll Park had had mentioned in his public testimony. I, the the sort of the one-offs or the week-long opportunities, like those are awesome. It can be awesome and like sparking interest or exposure, all these types of things. Um but I I hope that as we're seeking to reach, that we're not over-reliant on these like, you know, one-off or a couple days type things when we're calculating the percentage of students. Because because obviously there's an important difference between having a, you know, this week we're doing this versus like, I get to spend half a semester doing a thing. So, yeah.
Yep. And from our perspective, um you'll see through our new capital projects that uh one thing that Director Moore is very intentional is that when we build, we build it in mind that we need to use the space as an athletic space. So we are building spaces that have more seating uh for spectators. Uh we are building things like Middle Branch where we have turf fields or multiple fields at one location. So what you'll see from our capital projects are buildings that support the full recreation experience, right? We're moving away from small field houses that don't have regulated gyms, that don't have outdoor field space to spaces like a boat check, right, where it wasn't field house. Now we are building onto phase two, which will add a full regulated gym. We have Park View that's coming online that has a gym. We have Chick Webb that's coming online that has a gym. So for us, our infrastructure and where we see ourselves as a space to fill in the gap is that we do have assets. We do have locations for sports. So I think as we continue to grow out the citywide system, it's gonna require coordination between us and the school systems. I will pause here, though. Um that requires additional um funding for us as well, right? We don't have a special team that comes to line fields that's conducted by our park maintenance team. So as the usage of our facilities increases, um and in order to do it well, we're gonna need additional funding to have additional people or machinery. We have new robots that do field lining for us. So hopefully our uh friends at the school system have have better lining of the fields now that we've invested in that type of technology. So I think it goes hand in hand. Our investments um in our outdoor and our indoor um spaces reflect that we want to have spectators and we want to have full uses of our gyms.
Thank you so much, Chief of Staff Smith. And yeah, certainly, certainly heard and you know, certainly interested in in seeing those requests from, you know, from the agencies on the funding side and understanding how the council can be supportive there. The uh the other question I have on the, when we look at the district-coordinated sports, um you know, baseball, softball and soccer are not on there. And those, those three sports strike me as like the types of sports that there's an opportunity for a large scale of participation. And and something that I've had the opportunity to to talk with um the new Orioles, you know, ownership and leadership team. And I feel like they are really, really bought in on um and like bringing baseball and softball back to black communities and and specifically in the city and whatnot. And I think that's so important and they seem like a really eager partner to have here. And so I guess I'm just curious as to like, what are we doing to, you know, um Chief Saff Perkins Cohen's made the point about kids who are playing baseball in high school and never put on a glove before, right? And and that's certainly the case at Digital Harbor. I've, you know, I've seen that with both those teams. So I'm curious to know like for those, those three big sports, what's the, what's the plan?
We thank you for that question. Um Soccer Without Borders is one of the organizations that we did help support um to address soccer in the middle school. Um baseball and softball are areas that we know are critical in the development, but we have significant challenges with field access at the high school level, so we knew that it would be very, very difficult to take on at the middle school level. Um we only have a handful of schools that have onsite field, baseball and softball fields at the high school. We don't have that in the middle school. And so in order to be able to effectively provide um competition programming, we did not think we were there yet, but it was definitely on our radar. Um we have not leveraged recent partnerships um with the Orioles. And we were also working, I think, with Bubba, doing some clinic work so they could develop the skills. But we'd certainly be open to getting more information um if there is um some desire. We have the one field uh currently, I guess, kind of closed off for construction, but they've been, we've been able to access it um with the Cal Ripken Project at Frederick Douglass, and it's critical. Um if you ever are in Baltimore City around playoff time, the spring gets dangerous with weather. You never know what's gonna happen. And so all of our schools are reliant on that when, you know, we have like a a rough weather week to be able to host those contests. So more access to fields like that would definitely be great. Again, I think our partners have already talked about what it takes to not only maintenance the field, um but we don't have a lot of them.
So when we talk about Wrenken Parks filling the gap, I think as this process continues to develop and we get to see clear lines, I can envision a space where we, meaning Wrenken Parks, would be the provider of baseball, that we would manage that sport and that the school system would come through us. Um so one of the things we want to keep the conversation going, because we don't want to all be doing the same work to get the same impact, right? So we see our best selves when we're in true partnership. So clear lines will help us decide if the schools yield baseball and softball to Wrenken Parks, then we will become better experts at it than we are now. So I think for us, it is once this program continues to build out, we'll start to see different clear lines where it makes more sense. If we have more soccer fields and we have more baseball fields, then perhaps it makes sense that we are the vendor or the provider that the school system relies on to do the scheduling and to field those teams. I mean, to make sure uh the baseball program continues to grow. We've had great success at our uh softball-baseball program out of Patterson Park. And uh Quentin and his team are expanding those um ideas and those thoughts across the city. So when we talk about the whole ecosystem, it is finally, you know, linking arms and figuring out who does what the best and supporting each other to make sure that we're having the most amount of impact. So that's when we do see some clear lines. There, it will become obvious to the sports that we should um really invest our resources and our facilities into and then allow the school system um to manage those ones that they have the infrastructure for.
Awesome. Looking forward to seeing that development. Uh and then lastly, uh we've seen a lot of uh, I think, great growth in dance on the high school level and dances, you know, both in in art and a sport. Um and I, so I, I didn't see it on here, um but was just curious if that's being factored in this.
Dance is on the application. Um it's one of the sports offered on the application for roster folks. And I I know Coach G Academy was on there and Dance Happens um is here, I think, as well, and they applied. So we're we are expecting to see some dance and movement um in that way as well. Yeah, really exciting. And also conditioning um was another area that um we added um this year to the list, um in addition to yoga. Thinking more expansively.
Awesome. Uh Councilman Jones?
Yes, uh first, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here today. I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Blanchard, for bringing this topic up today. Um it's really important and critical to our children in that future uh that we provide them with access and with the things that they need in order to, you know, live the most fruitful life as possible. Um because you know, I, what what Frederick Douglass said, you know, it's easier to what build stronger children than to heal broken men. And I think it's best that we make the investment now instead of, you know, on the back end, because our biggest competitor and competition when it comes to this topic is the internet video games. Um so we need to have wonderful facilities and opportunities to pull them away and outside of that to engage. Um just wanted to uplift that first. Uh I guess my first question was kind of towards uh B C Y F. Um while I I applaud you all for recognizing a gap that that exists within middle school sports and wanting to jump in and supply, you know, that need and fill that need. I guess my question comes to the long-term strategies between B C Y F and Baltimore City Schools when it comes to funding, you know, and uplifting and supporting uh middle school, both school, middle school sports. Because when I often don't, because I can see you all look at it separate than high school sports, um which Baltimore City Public Schools kind of take on a lot of that. But how do you differentiate the two to kind of um avoid future bleeding from saying, well, we need more support now from high school sports? And B C Y F, are you jumping in now to help uplift high school sports? Or is there a plan for Baltimore City Public Schools to eventually, once we get this thing up and running, to fund more of it once we get to sixty sixty-three percent or so? I'm just kind of curious of the long-term strategies and how you differentiate the two to make sure, you know, we, we don't bleed over.
Our long-term funding strategy is to support middle school sports, so to support middle school. Um the one area um that I've heard from community is around, of course, early immersion. Um so thinking about if any, if we were to go in any direction in terms of investment, I think it would be to go earlier um to look at that zero to um fifth grade time um is my understanding. But we are focused on middle school, so fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Um in some, some places that'll be sixth through eighth, some places will be fifth through eighth. And we're really focused there as that um equity strategy. So I think there's a lot of energy and excitement about um getting young people into gloves or bats or nets as soon as possible, right? And so making sure that I, we know that there's a lot of investment in high school, and so we are committed to this middle school space. This fund is being funded by, through a president's fund grant. Um and so um I'm sure there will be some talk about how to create a more, of course, as the the metrics start to roll out, of course, we'll be doing a lot of the work. And that's why Brandon is here from the External Affairs Team. He oversees development. So it'll be part of his job as well to bring on additional funders to make the the C C Y A fund more robust. Um our three hundred thousand dollar investment is wonderful, and we anticipate that again for F Y twenty-six, to make another investment for F Y twenty-seven. But three hundred thousand dollars will not create sixty-three percent and get us to goal. So that's another piece of this puzzle is um looking at this community-wide investment um and finding more partners to support the work long-term.
Thank you for that perspective, because that was one of my questions, because there is a tremendous amount of opportunity that exists in professional sports to invest early in youth sports, because these are their potential customers. Um especially when it comes to WNBA and women's basketball and I kind of see the, hate to say that, they're looking earlier. How can we get, you know, youth engaged and they're our future customers? So there is that opportunity between that and also even flight football, I wrote down, to where I see the NFL are trying to uplift flag football and how can they invest in? Because once children get interested, then they become football fans in the future. So I love the idea of you all providing that mechanism for people to make that investment. Um but also, the other thing is, I recognize some of these organizations are, it's easier to ask for like capital improvement investments too, because they want to invest in their property. And when we looked at the facility conversation, if they're not willing to do the long-term investment, I think capital improvements investment will 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 help as well. And uh just making sure we have a long-term strategy. Uh and I guess my other question was, I guess, to Wrenken Parks, it was kind of brought up the your perspective on filling in the gap once things get set up. I I think often the gap isn't necessarily looking at it as what programming the middle schools don't exist that you may also want to have. Um maybe looking at it as you can provide the same programming, but a different level of competition. Um because I I realize even with middle school, these things can get really, really competitive where every op, where every child don't necessarily have the same opportunity to make the team or get on him. You can't have a a a team with forty kids on it. So some kids, because it's so competitive to make the team, may not get the opportunity. So it may be good for uh Wrenken Parks to create that non- So it may be good for Wrenken Parks to create that non-competitive league, so all of our children can have an opportunity to engage in these sports and eventually get good so they, they can compete. Because I, I think there is a space for the middle school world to create a competitive environment where like we can really shine and allow an opportunity for our children to shine. Because there exists private, the A A U tournament circuits that exist where parents are paying thousands of dollars in order to astronomical numbers, which aren't fair, just so they're, just so they can provide an opportunity for their children to shine. And we shouldn't have to, parents shouldn't have to be pressured into, the only way that they can give their children an opportunity to, to, to be viewed or to, to be on the stage at the moment is by paying thousands of dollars in these A A U circuits. And I think that exists for the middle school ring, middle school space to fill that gap as well. And if they do, then Parks and Wrenken can jump in, but then not as competitive.
Yeah. So we, I think when we talk about building the program out, those are the type of discussions that I think will be meaningful for us to have an coordinated approach. Where Wrenken Parks has found success is because we are true collaborators and coordinators with other people doing the things. I think we need some continued conversation about what the middle school, are they gonna be doing the skills and development and we're gonna do the competition? I think that when we compete with each other, it diminishes our impact to the, to the kids of Baltimore, right? So I think we are our best selves when we are at the table. And I think that's the intention of this strategy, that we sit down and figure out what is the strategy, strategy gonna be. We compete, not compete, but we're in the same space as City Schools, as A A U sports, and they're the same kids, right? They're kids who are getting picked up from West Baltimore and taken to Anarundo County to play in A A U sports. We would like to have all of our athletes in Baltimore, in our facilities, in our schools, being cheered on by their neighbors. But I think that what has been missing in this landscape is the coordination. Who is doing what, when and how? I think as we continue to have conversations and we continue to understand what the school system is doing, we'll be able to better chart our path forward. We've seen this in just even the summer school, I mean, in out-of-school time over the summer. Once the school system increased what they were offering, we started to see lower enrollment for our summer camps. So when we have an opportunity to stop, to sit down and discuss, we can figure out where we can complement each other. The Scott administration has been very intentional, that this city will be its best selves when everybody is working together. I think the middle school strategy is a space where we have opportunity. There are funders like the Orioles, Under Armour, the Ravens, who we just finished a project in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club, because we thought about thinking outside the box. Doesn't matter that it's a Boys and Girls Club, it's a state-of-the-art football stadium and basketball that now young people in Baltimore get to enjoy. So I think the biggest selling point for us is to, to get at the table with schools in a meaningful way to figure out, are you all doing developmental? Are you all gonna be doing skills and drills for flag football? Because we have a really good tackle program that Quentin and his team have built out. So we just need to figure out what the lines are so that they can direct their, their young people to our programs when it makes sense and vice versa. So I think there's a lot of conversations and a lot of coordination that has to happen over the next several months as we build it out. But I think what we wanna do is one, to make sure we are building the state-of-the-art facilities that can have competitive sports for young adults and for young people. But then also making sure we're having these opportunities where we are not competing for the same young people, that we are complimenting each other and making sure we're making the full breadth of sports available to Baltimore.
Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to, for bringing this before us. I played sports in middle school, it was great. I played basketball, yes, I did. And soccer, and I ran track. And so it was definitely a big part of the, of our, of my experience. My daughter's also in middle school, however, she is a theater kid. And so I wanna make sure that our theater kids get a shout out and get some attention as well. Because, you know, I think really any opportunity for our young people to see themselves succeed is gonna be important. I know this conversation is about middle school, but I also just want to acknowledge that I think we need to make sure that we're boosting up all of the programming for our young people who may not be wanting to play sports. But like I said, my, my daughter's a theater kid. So I had two questions. One, I, I also wanna mention about collaboration and partnership. Murvo Baseball and Softball uses the Northwood Fields. And so that, those are city-owned property, but is a, you know, nonprofit that actually works with our young people. So we've had to be very creative in that regard to be able to get the, the baseball team, the, and the softball team, what they needed. And so I think to your point earlier about trying to make sure that that works. And then obviously, the councilman and I have been working very diligently with Wrenken Parks and with the school system on the Reach Field that's gonna finally, finally, finally have a groundbreaking very soon. And I imagine that the Reach Field is, at Lake Clifton, is gonna be really utilized, I think, by a lot of different groups. So I'm really excited about welcoming folks there. But my question was really about, it sounds like some of these conversations are just preliminarily happening. So I wondered if the deputy mayor will be convening everyone to have these conversations about that kind of collaboration? Like if Wrenken Parks has the baseball fields, has the, you know, and I think that they happen, you know, I know that for instance, at Clifton Park, the Reach School uses the baseball fields, but then also their baseball fields are used by some of the leagues. And so it's, it's already sort of happening. And I just kind of wondered if the mayor's office will be convening folks in the interim time before we have another hearing to be able to talk about what those, what that collaboration is looking like.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos. But yes, that is absolutely the plan, to make sure that we have convening opportunities and that we're actually cross, we're crosswalking our data, the systems and procedures that we already have in place. And this is also doing asset mining around what each organization can actually bring to the table, mostly with City Schools, you know, leading this and what, the work that they're going to have. So we will, by the time that there's another convening, we will have more updates, more milestones will be in place. But to Chief, Chief of Staff Smith's point, we, that is the opportunity that still awaits us, is to make sure that we are doing intersectional work between our agencies, we are doing data sharing to a point of more offerings than this past summer, so a decline in enrollment for recreation and parks. But had that communication line maybe been open, we would have been able to be more proactive in that, right? But now we do have that opportunity to explore what it will look like to see the true intersectionality of all of the agencies, the assets that each one of the agencies bring to the table. And then obviously, what everyone is saying around facilities, money, obviously. And then, you know, what strengths everyone is able to galvanize, whether it be through private or public partners that, that we can also work with, like the Ravens, like Under Armour, like the Orioles, as we continue to move through with this project and what we have in mind for our goals.
That, that'll be great. And hopefully by the next hearing, which I would imagine we're gonna have one, that, you know, that we'll get a report back on how that's going. And, you know, as budget season comes forward, I mean, we did in the last term fund, I guess it was two or three years ago, we provided additional dollars for girls' middle school sports, I believe, to the school system. So it is something that the council has taken on in the past and certainly wanna make sure that every young person has that opportunity if they want it and that we have, you know, everything that they need. So hopefully that we can hear back, and I guess I'll make that a formal request so that we have it in the record, to, you know, hear back on the, the conversations around this collaboration that we're talking about on facilities and on programming with B C Y F, the school system and Wrenken Parks, and sort of keep that as a milestone as we, as we continue these conversations. Does that work? Thank you.
I don't see any additional comments. I'll just say, you know, we're actually right on time in terms of our time slot. It's two thirty-two. We started two hours ago. But I'll just say, I'm really encouraged by the conversation today. I'm very encouraged by the members of the public who came out, whether they be providers, parents, I look, the young people that came out, the students who spoke so eloquently, they are our future and just so proud of it. But really, the partnerships, the city agencies are doing this work. We know it's not easy, but it's so important for our young people. I know some of us are parents, some of us have been coaches. The reality is that this is such an investment in our young people. So again, thank you all for taking the time today. I thank my committee members for their great questions and follow-ups. And again, just thank you all for being here today. There will be another hearing, because this is something that we understand is an important piece, is informational. So at this point, we will stand adjourned. Have a good rest of the day. Take care.